I'm sorry, can you guys remind me of your names again? All right, now let's, how much did you ask? And, um, I think we're ready, right? So just tell us some questions before we move on.
Okay, hello, and welcome to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. As usual, we will begin with looking to the audience for volunteers, for someone to lead us in a prayer, reading, or thought, and someone to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any volunteers out there willing to do either of those? Okay, I like these first two. So, okay, whichever one of you is going to come up, you can come and lead us in the prayer, reading, or thought, and then the next one could be the pledge. Well, you can fight with your brother or whoever that is over it.
He'd like to be my friend.
The pledge, okay, so we have one volunteer for, they all want to do the pledge, okay. Well, we're starting with the prayer. All right, we'll bring it up here. There's no other volunteers. Oh, here we have a volunteer. If you could come to the podium.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet together to talk about issues that are confronting us. We are grateful for the commissioners who are here, and pray that thou will bless them with level minds and thy Spirit to help them be discerning what is best. We pray that thou will bless each of us in the room, that we can have a spirit of cooperation and consideration for one another. We thank thee for this wonderful country that we live in, where we have the opportunity to exercise our freedoms and assemble together, and we ask that thy blessings be upon this country and upon us today, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. All right, if all three of you want to come up now and lead us in the pledge.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Lee, for the Employee of the Month recognition.
All right, is Debbie Shoemaker here? I didn't see her walk in. Come on up. I saw people coming, I saw them going around looking to see which side you're on, so I was, good to have you here.
Am I coming all the way up or just here?
Right there, right there's fine for now, and then you'll get a chance.
You gotta listen to all this.
Yeah. So the analogy of Debbie Shoemaker's role in the Health Department could be that of a book, in fact, a giant book of knowledge. Debbie could be considered the bookends of the Health Administration office. She is the first one here in the morning and the last one to leave in the evening. She can, excuse me, she can also be deemed the bookend of reliability and commitment to the success of the Health Department. She is similarly the spine of the book, holding the bookends and all the important pages together. Some of the many significant things she holds together are bookkeeping, financial tracking, record-keeping, and operations of the Health Department. With all her years of experience in the Health Department, the pages in the book include her expertise, including understanding the complex processes, experiences, experience, and total recall of how things work. The chapters in the giant book of knowledge have been written by Debbie for the connections and the information she has accumulated over the years, linking the Health Department's relationship with the Auditor's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Recorder's Office, Public Works, Human Resources, not to mention the divisions with the Health Department. Debbie has been with the county for 24 years and with the Health Department for 22 years, correct?
Correct.
As the Health Department Business Manager, Debbie Shoemaker helps to refine important financial purchases and other processes necessary to comply with the merit of giant requirements, accounting procedures, and audit mandates. And I'm skipping through, I'll let you read the whole thing later, but I'm just highlighting some. Debbie manages all the data and administrative office use with a vast database she has created. She can run limitless reports from that database. Debbie serves as liaison between the Health Department and the Utah County Human Resources. She coordinates new hires, personnel actions, and tracking employees' appraisals. It has been said that Debbie is, is, let me get this right, it has been said of Debbie, it is unheard of to have an appraisal received late in Human Resources due to her excellent tracking methods. And then this was written by your boss, Ralph Clegg. Working with Debbie is like having a sunny, warm spring day, even though it is winter and cold outside. She brightens each day with her work ethic and practical approach to problem-solving. She is so thorough and good at meeting deadlines and making sure that tasks are completed. It is scary, probably, probably the thing that stands out most about Debbie is that she has been able to put up with Ralph for 22 years. She has the patience of Job, she is the glue that holds all the pieces together in the Health Administration, yes. She is faster than a speeding bullet and able to keep a tall building, leap a tall building in a single bound. And there's some others on here too, but we just wanted to congratulate you as the Employee of the Month.
Thank you.
We've got some stuff for you here, we'll come down there, and you'll get a chance after, so you can speak to if you'd like.
Oh my goodness, forgotten twice now, this is the second time. Why does this come down now? Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
This is yours, too.
Well, thank you. That's quite all right, I'll pass on the mic.
Okay, we'll now go through the process of building our agenda. We have 19 items on our published consent agenda, and 18 items on our published regular agenda. Everything, unless we hold it for discussion, it will be placed on consent for approval. As we go through here, I think we need to strike, or rather, continue consent agenda item number eight.
For two weeks.
Continue it for two weeks. And I understand there's no time sensitivity on that one anymore?
Just because they didn't get all the documents on it?
They're no longer trying to do it with their funding, so it's a 2021 issue.
Plus that inter-local agreements.
Right.
Could we, could we hold number four?
Hold number four on consent?
Number seven?
Number seven? Okay. I don't have any others on the consent agenda, anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, moving to regular, um, I think we should strike number two? I assume we want to hold number 14?
Mm-hmm. 14, yes. And a question on number 13. A question on number 13, okay.
All right, any others? Okay, we'll move to consent agenda item number four. Actually, let me, there's one thing that I would like to do here, is if you are here to make a public comment, and you have a public comment on any of the items that we just placed on the consent agenda, is there anyone in that category? Then give you the opportunity to speak now.
I'm with the Utah County Art Board.
So, you're number four. We're holding to discuss it.
On number three, on consent, we just had a minor update to the agreement, and Patrick has it in his hand right now, but wasn't able to upload it. And so, it just references the state contract that it falls under, this immediate contract, and so, it's my hope that the consent agenda would recognize the contract that Patrick has in his hand, as opposed to the one that was uploaded.
Did it change the key economic terms?
No, no, it's all, it's a very, it's a pretty minor change, but...
So I'm fine noting that, that it's approved on consent with the change of the updated contract, okay? Thank you, Paul. Okay, we'll move to consent agenda item number four.
I believe we want to cover just two things really quickly. I'm Rochelle Wise with the Utah County Art Board, and we keep the art rotating in the Health and Justice Building, and do about eight to 12 shows a year, and I'm hoping we can get just approval for our basic duties for the year, and then I have a project we've been hashing over for a couple of years that we're hoping to move forward with. of a large one, and I went ahead and put in some grants to the Utah Arts and Museums to see if they would possibly assist us in the project. They've approved $500 towards building of the case, and there's a dead space over in the Health and Justice Building, it's just by the side of the restrooms, and it's about a 10-foot space, and I've had Brady, the Public Works Director, come over and look at it. He assures me that his team of guys would be more than willing to build it if the county approves it, and the Utah County Arts Board is a 501(c)(3), it's a nonprofit organization. We might be able to get a few people in the community to donate some of the materials over as well. It's estimated that the whole project will probably be close to around $2,000, and if your men are covering the labor costs, that should cut that down substantially. The tempered glass is about 40 bucks a square foot, and we're hoping to get it approved so that the case would serve for probably 20 to 50 years, instead of a small case that we could buy. And we could just buy a small case if it's approved, that we could do it, but if we build one in with the building that will match, it will be more structurally sound, and we could build it a little higher so that we don't have children hanging on the glass cases, and just wanted to present that to you today.
Okay, thank you. My understanding, so this is outside of the art board agreement that was on the agenda today?
Yes, yes, this is a separate project.
Okay, so I think that we'll just have to consider that separately at another time, and we can have it on the agenda.
All right, I was just advised to bring it today and hand it forward to you.
Okay, appreciate it.
And just be aware that the grant that we've got, the $500, it has to be put to use by the end of April, or I have to return it to the Utah Arts and Museums Board. So it's time-sensitive in how long I have to get the project approved and built if we're going to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the commission chair to execute the cosponsorship of the Utah County Arts Board for 2020.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item number four. Before I call for a vote on that, I just want to make sure, this is coming out of TRCC or TRT tax, is that right? Okay, great. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes 3-0. Okay, consent agenda item number seven?
I'm not sure who had any questions.
I asked this one to be held. My question, I know I've talked with David quite a bit on this, and it's not necessarily the money part of it, I just don't have enough information on it. Usually when we've gone through with RFPs and processes for outside vendors, we get kind of a list of what is to be done, and who will do what, and what will push the needle, stuff like measuring public opinion and constituent understanding, you know, number of social posts and needs of impressions and likes, and how that moves, and so I was all for last year, and I'm still okay with the 54,000, but I just don't see any way to measure with the attachment that was on there of what the increase is necessarily for, or a detailed list of what is going to be provided.
Commissioner Lee, if I can respond to that, you had asked me to get you that, and I, yes, David Levitt, Utah County Attorney, you had asked me to get that to you, and I texted it to you a couple of days ago, and I just looked at my phone and it wasn't delivered. So you don't have it. If you'll give me your email right here.
William L. at utahcounty.gov.
I will send it to you, happy to provide it to anyone, but if you can, if you're willing to pass this, maybe you can look at it on your, it's just a one-page document that indicates really what we anticipate the service is to be, and take a look at it and see if that answers your questions.
So, I mean, so the others must have, you've already seen it?
I have not seen this attachment.
You're the only one that asked for this document, and so I, I'm just trying to respond to your request.
Yeah.
I've sent it out now.
Is it possible to continue it so we can look down through it and see what it is?
I would rather try to get it dealt with today, it's a bit of an issue for me as far as being able to move on it, and so, if at all possible...
Might I make a recommendation that we could table this?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Table it, and then come back to it after our closed session?
That'd be great.
I'll make a motion that we table number seven on our published consent agenda.
Second? Got a motion and a second to table item number seven, all in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes 3-0. Is our next item, regular agenda item number 13?
Yes. So, let's see, who's this, this is with...
This one's mine.
Oh, okay, the only question, the only question I have on this one, this is, and this was on the notes, I'll just read it, because I just didn't have an answer for it. This should be revenue neutral with the county?
Correct.
Collecting $3,300 from the farmers and ranchers and paying $6,600 to the state, and receiving $3,300 back from the state. The county's collected $2,750 from the ranchers and farmers so far, so I guess the only question is, does the additional $550 still need to be collected, or is that...
I can take that. So, the producers collectively would have to pony up at least $3,300. So we actually just had a check come in maybe two days ago, so the total collected is now $5,500, which means...
Oh, so we're over it?
Yeah, we're over it, which is fine. So the producers have met the 33.
I just saw us under.
Yep, exactly. And so, it'll be a total of $8,800 that the county will send to the state, $3,300 of which is county funds, and then we'll receive back a rebate or a reimbursement, if you will, from the state for that $3,300.
Right.
And then the US Department of Agriculture will carry out the project to the tune of $8,800 for the benefit of the producers participating.
Fantastic.
And move that we approve regular agenda item number 13?
Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve regular agenda item number 13, all in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes 3-0. Regular agenda item number 14.
So I started, I put this on the agenda. This is basically just to refer to the Planning Commission proposal, and working with Bryce Armstrong on this, you know, he recommended two options for this to be referred back to the Planning Commission, and so I put both those options on here for referral basis, and we can talk about them, I think. Option number two, option number two is, has got some more problems, as to say, in doing that one than option number one, but I would like, I would like to see this at least be referred, all we're doing is referring it to the Planning Commission to consider.
One thought that I have, as I've looked at this, we did get a number of emails from concerned Provo residents, and when I first started getting the emails, I had not even heard about this issue or was aware of a proposed development. As I have looked through the notes from Provo's Planning Commission, I do want to note a few things. One is, a portion of this development is in the city of Provo, and even the unincorporated portion is within Provo's annexation plan. Also, I really don't see this as feasible without connecting to Provo City Water and Provo City Sewer, and the developer indicated, based on the meeting notes, that the intention was to develop in the county and then annex to the city. Based on a lot of this, in addition to the fact that I think there are some road-grade issues that this plan may comply with city but not with the county, I strongly discourage this type of development within the county. If you have an intention to end up in the city, you should start with the city and work with the city and make sure that the city will approve it. And, so, I don't know if any of these actions are necessary for us today, because ultimately this, and I do want to be respectful of whatever property rights the developer has, I think we all need to keep that in mind. If there's a zoning or there are certain rights that they have, then they have, there's nothing that we can do about that. At the same time, I think that the city is in, the city of Provo is in a strong position, because it needs to approve all of those things that we just talked about. So I'm not sure that there's really anything at the county that we need to do to address this issue. That's just my initial thoughts after taking a quick review on this. I imagine that many of you are here for public comment on this, okay? I don't know, any other thoughts before we open it up for public comment?
Yeah, I would like to, the TR5 issue in the county has been, in my opinion, has been problematic on multiple levels. Over the years, we, a number of years ago, finally got one which we thought was going to move into the city. It took 30 or 40 years, I don't remember if it was 30 or 40 years, before it actually moved into the city, although everything was built and planned according to what was done, and it was done in the county, and so that was, for me, that was kind of a little bit of a tipping point where I thought, there's, we've got to look at this a little bit differently, especially when we have neighbors, when we have city neighbors that are close by, that their zoning is a little bit different. And so, when this one popped up, I, you know, it was kind of like the straw that broke the camel's back for me, and I thought, this needs to go back and we need to have a serious look about TR5 zones, and what we have, what we have in them, especially when they're not consistent with some of the neighbors that are around there. Why are we, you know, we have PUDs and so forth that are involved in these, and I just think that it's an opportunity for us to take a look at the TR5 zones, and it also has the RR5 because of the nature of it, but to take a look at these and see what's appropriate and what's not, and if they've been problematic in the past and it's taken 30 or 40 years, why not take a look at it now and move something, at least have a conversation with it, with our planning commissions, so that they can, they can address it and give us some recommendations.
Yeah, I definitely echo Commissioner Range's sentiments on the recent challenges in Provo, and, but I would be happy to refer this back to the Planning Commission, because historically we have had, this always seems to be an area of conflict, not just within the Provo foothills, but throughout the county, and I'd like to see some recommendations from the Planning Commission on how they think we can just stop having this problem, right? And my perspective on this is, we just, I don't want large-scale developments in the county. The model we've had in this county for a very long time is to have those type of developments happen in incorporated cities. If you want to have those happen, you need to find a mechanism to incorporate, and I think that we need to make some tweaks to our zoning laws to maybe reinforce that that's the direction we're having, and that's what I would hope would come out of this action from the Planning Commission, is a way to address some of these areas that have been problematic, to ensure that, you know, our overall zoning ordinances and laws are cohesive to that general vision of having any type of large-scale development happen within cities.
I appreciate both those comments, and I think in many ways, we are all saying the same thing, in that the one that you're talking about that took 30 or 40 years, I wasn't around for that, but it did happen in the city I live in, and so I experienced a lot of the frustration that citizens feel every day about how that went. And part of the issue is the zoning, but part of it is not. That didn't have to happen, right? What was weird about that is that the city agreed to connect water and sewer before the annexation was agreed to. And so, here, I would still say that the city of Provo is really in the driver's seat to not, if there's no intention to annex, that's where it gets really bad, is if the development is approved at the county level and the city agrees to connect some services, and then there's a fight about annexation. And so, let's open it up for public comment. If we could get this shot clock set for three minutes, we've had some turnover, let's see if we can figure out the details of how to operate this. If you want to have those happen, you need to find a mechanism to incorporate. And I think that we need to make some tweaks to our zoning laws to maybe reinforce that that's the direction we're having. And that's what I would hope would come out of this action from the planning commission, is a way to address some of these areas that have been problematic, to ensure that, you know, our overall zoning ordinances and laws are cohesive to that general vision of having any type of large-scale development happen within cities.
I appreciate both those comments. And I think in many ways, we are all saying the same thing in that the one that you're talking about that took thirty or forty years, I wasn't around for that, but it did happen in the city I live in. And so I experience a lot of the frustration that citizens feel every day about how that went. And part of the issue is the zoning, but part of it is not. That didn't have to happen, right? What was weird about that is that the city agreed to connect water and sewer before the annexation was agreed to. And so here, I would still say that the city of Provo is really in the driver's seat to not, if there's no intention to annex, that's where it gets really bad, is if the development is approved at the county level and the city agrees to connect some services, and then there's a fight about annexation. And so let's open it up for public comment. If we could get this shot clock set for three minutes. We've had some turnover. Let's see if we can figure out the details of how to operate this. But we can go ahead and get started. We'll try to manage it. But I'll invite people to come up and please state your name for the record and try to limit your comments to under three minutes. Thank you.
We'll do an audible alarm for you.
Fine, thank you. My name is Craig Christensen. I'm a resident of Provo. I appreciate the service that you three commissioners provide our county. Thank you. Please continue to provide leadership to the county, specifically in terms of rethinking TR five and sending that back to the commission to be reconsidered. A lot of things have changed here in our wonderful city of Provo, and they will continue to change. It makes sense that we continue to also change how we think about things like TR five. So it would be prudent to send it back to the commission and really think about how it impacts, especially the city of Provo, as it relates to the developments being proposed in the foothills. In Provo, the foothill preservation ordinance and the neighborhood plan are in the process of being finalized. And again, it just seems it would be imprudent not to rethink how the county blends in. I thought Tanner, your comments were very appropriate, how it actually blends in with the plan that the city of Provo has. Just a, it seems that one of the things that is constant about the population change is there's a default to a race to pavement. And once pavement is put in, it's very hard to take out, especially when it's in the most beautiful prized possession of the city, which is its foothills and its mountains. And so being very careful about how we go about that is something that's appreciated by all, certainly myself and my neighbor. So I would encourage you to reconsider TR five, send it back to the planning commission and work closely with the city of Provo in terms of how that unfolds. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kay Nelson. I live in Provo. And I, good afternoon to all of you and thank you for listening to our concerns. I am here also to support your efforts to have the county planning commission review and amend those parts of the county land use ordinance and county general plan, land use map in those sections eighteen, seven and eighteen. You're all aware of a movement to protect and preserve and conserve the remaining foothills of Provo. And I know I'm kind of speaking to the choir. And these foothills range all the way from Provo Canyon down to the Springville border and also into Provo Canyon. Provo City is currently creating this foothills preservation ordinance regarding that area. And it's sorely needed because this is the last of the foothills in Provo. They have been built on, but we have heard that developers do want to build even higher than what's already on the foothills. So it does include all of the foothills of Provo. And we just would like, we think it's hasty to approve any plans for development in the foothills until the preservation ordinance is written and in place. We have talked so many and people love to live, they love this area and they want to live here. And one of the reasons they want to live here is because of the foothills and the mountains and how much you can, how quickly you can get to them and hike and jog and snowshoe and picnic. And, you know, it's a rare and treasured gem that we have these. And we all know Provo's growing, and I'm not against development, I'm for development. But I feel like it needs to take place in areas that are not on sensitive land, that are sustainable, where infrastructure and transportation already exist and where there can be a focus also on affordable housing, which is very much needed in Provo. Growth will happen. Developments in housing must take place in Provo. People want to live here. As we consider developments, let's be wise and balance any developments with the need for preservation, easements, conservancies, even the aesthetic beauty and the value of being good stewards of this earth. I know that we won't regret doing so if we stop and think about this. So thank you for taking this step today to send this back to the planning commission and let them review it and hopefully amend it to make it a little bit more in line with Provo and a little bit tighter so that we can present our foothills, preserve our foothills. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are-
We're on top of it.
Yeah, on top of things.
Yeah, we've been doing this for eight months.
No buzzers, nothing's going off.
We call ourselves accidental activists. So, so to speak to, I'm Angela Marek, also a resident of Provo. So I just wanted to talk, so we don't understand the ins and outs of TR five and we've been trying to study it. So this is all technical. So we're talking to a bigger picture or a bigger vision that would result from sending this back to the planning commission and looking at it. So I want to talk about the potential domino effect. When land use ordinances are changed and big developments are put on. Think about what will happen. It will open the doorway for a domino effect all the way up Provo Canyon, which is in Utah County. We do realize it's in the annexation map for Provo to annex some of that land going forward. But then the question becomes, what are we going to do with it? And I think we need to take a good look at that. I wanted, what are open spaces are going to look like going forward? This case of the Provo foothills and then into the canyon. If we could put that into conservancy easements for long-term public access with more trails for biking, hiking, more parks, more parking, more public access. Just take a look at South Fork, Brettlevale Falls, Big Springs, Vivian Park on a weekend. Simply by the numbers of people that are there, they're voting for more public access. We don't even really need to take a poll because just the numbers of people that go there and try and recreate are sending a loud message, just by their presence. So these are the remaining of our precious foothills in Provo. And we have other foothills to talk about. But how many cities can say that they can access one side of their city to the other with non-motorized transportation? We don't have to drive two hours to head to the hills. We can get on a bike and head to the hills and be there. I think that's something worth preserving and thinking about, and our zoning needs to reflect a relevant future. I'd just like to point out, there was an article that came out today, maybe you're all aware of it, about the ten top cities that are desirable to live in, in 2020 this year. And Provo is one of them. And I just want to read one part out of that article. It says, "Those who like to hike, mountain bike and ogle the majestic scenery will be very happy in Provo, which is set within striking distance of weekend trips." And then they start naming all these. Why do we need to take weekend trips anywhere? We've got it right here. We need to capitalize on what we've got and not just give it away to just sprawling unsustainable development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Memmott, I'm in the Edgemont neighborhood. I have to admit to being confused. I'm looking at the consent agenda and it said we are on number fourteen of the consent agenda, I thought.
The regular agenda.
Did we pop that far? You guys move fast. I'm so impressed. Okay, so I did come to speak, number fourteen, on the regular agenda. And my comments would be that as I tried to become educated about this before I got here, because I support what you've already said, I appreciate that we need to do this as a planned effort and have a better thing. Provo's working on an FCA, incorporating something similar to Salt Lake's FCA's foothills protection. I support what the neighbors so far have said. I did want to comment, like I said, that as I tried to read on the website, the land use ordinances and things, under, even if you refer this to the planning for residential agriculture, I couldn't figure out what that meant for us as far as number of units per acre that we would expect to possibly see or never expect to see on that kind of thing. So I don't know if there's a way, one, to have some sort of, I know when Provo City does theirs, there's a supporting packet that I can read where you're coming from or where the application came from. So I don't have to come here and ask you and spend your time here. And two, maybe somehow point me in a direction to clarify what that means. What does TR five, I'm still working off what people are telling me, not what I could find in writing. What is TR five going to mean to us? And what will it mean if we tighten it up? What does that even mean? I'm not sure what direction you're heading. Thanks.
There's two people, if I could point you, before you, there's two people right over here. If they could raise their hands, they would be perfect to talk to.
And I also just want to clarify that one of the reasons is there is no application, is my understanding, for this development in the county. And so that's why I think a lot of people here for public comment and others of your neighbors who are concerned had questions. But this has not come before the county body. And so we don't have any plans, any application from a developer or anything of that sort.
Are we to state our name? Scott G. Smith, lifelong resident of that neck of the woods. We, my wife and I just came from the orchard, been up there enjoying the beauty, all morning pruning and working with trees. Our concerns are regarding right of ways to the orchard. We have irrigation lines and if they do grade, I believe I read an email. I don't know if it pertained to what you're talking about here. Far as grading, that we had a heads up on that. We own fifty-one plus acres. And it's in an APA. We enjoy it like it is right now. We're not entirely opposed to any development, but we'd like to have a heads up, like we say, if it's going to happen in the county. Because we really enjoy our APA and a nice quiet drive we've got up there today or any day working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Helena Carter Thomas. Since I'm here for something else that we don't need to talk about anymore, I thought I'd just mention, I mean, my opinion on this and development in the TR five zones or the RR five zone or any of these zones that allow a higher density are that if they require utilities from the city in order for them to proceed, that that's not a good idea. They need to annex at that point. So if they have the ability to go ahead and develop otherwise with other water sources or septic systems or things like that, then that's another story. But if city utilities are going to be provided, then the city needs to annex.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Shannon Bingham. I live here in the downtown area of Provo. Commissioners Lee, Ivy and Ainge, I urge you to ask Utah County planners to review the TR five zone in the foothills area of Utah County adjoining Provo City. We need to determine what would be the highest and the best use of that property for the majority of Provo City and Utah County. Provo City Council unanimously voted against a zone change from agricultural to residential in the Provo foothills last week. This prohibits the development that Bob Jones wanted, the TR development that Bob Jones was proposing to develop. I do have concerns that there will be the attempt to develop in unincorporated Provo. This type of development is not a sustainable type of development. As a nation, we are recognizing that suburban developments are financially unsustainable development patterns. Over a life cycle, a city frequently receives just a dime or two of revenue for each dollar of liability. I emailed an article to each of you. It's a Strong Towns article that explains in numbers, much better than I can, in the time that I have, how, what a financial drain this type of development becomes to a municipality over time. And it explains in much greater detail than I can. So I strongly encourage you to read that article and think, and also to ask the Utah County planners to review the zone in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Hyatt, I'm also from the Edgemont neighborhood. And I have some questions. Most of us have no idea what TR five means, but we do know what too much traffic means. We do know what it means to have houses sliding down a hillside in our end of the city because of the unstable geological formation of the area. And I'm not sure if that is included in a long-range plan. I would hope that it is. I do remember Mr. Jones said, the reason he was going to develop in the county is that that was consistent with the county's long-range, did he say forty or fifty-year plan? And I thought, woo, have they ever thought about the wildlife there, number one? But the geological instability of doing something like that, which would of course become the liability of Provo City. And Provo City, I think that was one of the things that helped them say, woo, you know, we need to look at this very, very carefully. But if that is included in a plan for the TR five change or whatever it is. And I'm with this other lady who said, we need to have something that is publicly accessible, but not only publicly accessible but understandable, where you can speak to the general public, where we say, what does that mean and what does that mean? So thank you and thank you for your good work.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comment, going once, going twice, bring it back up here.
I go ahead at this time if it's appropriate to move to refer regular agenda item number fourteen to the planning commission as stated.
We have a one, we have two options on there. Would it be all right if we, if we refer? I prefer number one, unless Peggy or, is that, I think we're, is that all right?
You could refer both if you wanted to.
Yeah, I was- Could, we could.
My thought was to refer both because it just gives them the option, you know, Peggy, you're happy to comment. My thought was to refer both because it-
Could. I put them on there for an option of either or. I think number two has a little bit of a problem.
I think it is.
I concur, but I'm just, for me, this is curiosity to see what they come back with as much as anything.
I'm Peggy Kelsey from Community Development Staff. I believe the intent when Bryce Armstrong looked at this was to have an either or. If we refer both of them back to the planning commission, it's going to be a lot of information, a lot of data, a lot of stuff that they're going to have to go through. So we actually would like it to be a little bit more narrow and coming from the board with the suggestion of which one you want us to do.
I guess I just want to, maybe we can tease this out a little bit. One consistent theme that I've had is I have not wanted to refer or modify our county ordinances to, in response to one single incident. That's kind of how we've been dealing with this or how I've been looking at it for the past year. I know that what I'm hearing is, but I guess I'm saying that partially for those who are here from and are concerned about this particular development is, there is no action that we are taking. This action that is proposed here actually is not specifically referencing the foothills development. There has been no application for it. So I think that's another reason why there's a different experience here today than maybe you had with the city of Provo. Is I didn't attend the city of Provo, but my understanding is that there was a staff report, there was an application pending, right? They were trying to modify something. And so you had a full presentation. None of that has happened at the county level. And so this action is just to review this generally, which would likely apply to this area since this area is also zoned in the TR five zone. And so, and Commissioner Lee, I know you made the point that it's not just this issue. We've had this issue many times. And so the time is ripe to kind of go ahead and refer this. Okay?
And there's, there's not a lot of TR five, but there are little pockets all the way around. They seem to just be popping up. It just seems like the right time to be going through and having the planning commission. You're correct. There's no decision on this. For those who are looking for more information or more discussion on it, that will happen on the TR five zone in the planning commission as they bring this issue up and talk more about the TR five issue countywide. So it's, there's a lot more information to come. This one is just a referral back saying, we have seen and we recognize that there are some complications and some problems with it potentially. And we'd like to have a recommendation from the planning commission after they go through all the information to say, this is what we're seeing and maybe we need to modify or not modify, whatever their recommendation is as it comes back to us.
And for me, Commissioner Ainge, it's not, this action to me isn't necessarily responsive to this. It's the historical context and it's been problematic. And I think this is one of those instances where it kind of comes to your attention. And when I look at, okay, it's happening-
And when I look at, okay, it's happening, it's happened before in Alpine and other areas, there's a potential of it happening in Provo, down around Payson, right? And so, as we look at the various spots, I think we can be preemptive a little bit here in, in being out ahead of the crisis, so we're not responding to one particular instance where we have an application in and you have all the public glamour and all the debate. For me, this is kind of a preemptive action to make sure that it's handled appropriately to try and steer clear of a lot of those issues because we've properly planned.
And, and I appreciate both that clarification, so just again, for those listening, if we take this action and we refer it to Peggy's comment, it's gonna create some work and some research on the part of our community development staff. If you attend those further meetings and you look at their further reports, they are also going to be general in nature about the entire countywide zone, not specific to any development. Okay?
Well, I think, generally.
Greg Robinson from community, community development. This, the, the item before you only specifically references the TR5 in sections seven and eighteen in the, those, that area, so it's only specifically talking about the, the TR5 in that area, not the entire county.
And we could relieve that and, and make it the entire county.
So, so, how does that read? Cause even the first option, so I'm just trying to follow through with the commas here, right? Cause I see that at the end of the second option, or does that apply to the first option as well?
So, if, if the first option would only, would be looking at the TR5 zone, allowing that large-scale developments in the TR5 zone, that being specifically planned unit developments, which would be effective for the entire zones everywhere in the county.
And then the second option, which I think Commissioner Lee was pulling, kind of, he wanted to pull that off.
Which I'm, I'm fine with.
And so, it would, if we just went with the first prong of this, that would be countywide?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we take action to refer to the Utah County Planning Commission, regular agenda item number fourteen, with a notation that they are to consider the first option.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on regular agenda item number fourteen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero. Okay. My notes suggest that we need a real property meeting.
Seventeen.
Sixteen?
Seventeen.
Oh, seventeen.
Seventeen and eighteen.
Seventeen and eighteen, okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we strike number fifteen and sixteen from our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second to strike fifteen and sixteen.
Oh, what do you, oh. So, I'll amend that motion to strike number fifteen on our regular agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to strike number fifteen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero.
Make a motion that we approve and set a date and time and location for closed meetings as stated in number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and second to set the time, date, and location for sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero. We have no work session today, is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into our closed session. Thank you.